All right, I call this meeting of the City of Marshall zoning board of appeals to order. Next item, roll call.
Member Burns? Member Hill?
Here.
Member Fisher Short?
Here.
Member Carnes?
Here.
Member Stewart? And I have a question on the thing, are you liaison or alternate? How would you alternate? All right, alternate Whertham's burger?
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Next, election of officers will begin with the election of the chair. Anyone?
Can I make a nomination as an alternate? These would be my recommendations.
I'm willing to continue, but if I'll take a nomination, I guess.
Second it.
Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, election of vice chair. Who is currently vice chair? That's fair. I nominate Ian Stewart.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Congratulations, Ian. All right. Next item, approval of the agenda, which any comments? If not, I'll take a motion on that.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda approved. All right, next item, approval of tonight's minutes, or excuse me, minutes from our last meeting, which were included in tonight's packet. Any comments on that? Otherwise, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes on the December fourteenth meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, it's approved. Next item, any public comment on agenda items? Do not believe we have a member of the public here other than on our, our business for tonight. Okay. Next item, public hearings. Subsequent board action. Old business. All right. We'll move to new business for this evening, which is appeal twenty twenty four dot O one or a dimensional variance at fifteen eight sixty one, West Michigan Ave. So I'm not sure who would like to speak.
Good evening, everybody. Jeff Kiesler from McKenna. We did a review of the variance for fifteen eight sixty one, West Michigan Avenue. And the, as proposed, are we all familiar with the, the site? It is a former Kmart building that is right now vacant. So as proposed, the developer would like to split that into individual units, three of them. And when that happens, two of the newly created lots would have effectively side yard setbacks of zero feet, which is less than the required twenty five yard setback. So all other dimensions for the project are in compliance with, with the zoning ordinance. It's just that when you slice that up, that one unit into three different parcels, two of them are not going to have any side yard setback. The third one will meet the twenty five yard, twenty five foot side yard setback, but two of them will not. So that's where we're at. And I'd be happy to walk through the review for you guys if that's what you'd like me to do. So the applicant is proposing to split the subject parcel into three separate parcels for a smaller commercial development as proposed to the single large retail space that currently exists. McKenna has suggested the applicant apply for a site condominium and place of variance, but the applicant does not wish to pursue that, that action. As a result, we're, we're kind of requesting that the applicant be required to ensure that the parcels will all have the appropriate road access through reciprocal access easement between all three of the parcels. So there is agreement there on what to do when the parking lot needs to be resurfaced or, you know, access in and out of the building. One of the businesses won't be able to put, you know, a giant sign in the way that restricts access to the other two, that kind of thing. That easement we're, we're recommending just to kind of prevent headaches for you guys later on. So the, the variance is, it's a variance from section three point one point ten D to reduce the required twenty five yard setback and allow the split of the parcel into three smaller parcels. The review that we have completed, that has a number of different criteria on page two and spilling into page three. Those criteria are all found in your zoning ordinance, of course. They spell out how to review a, a variance request. And if you turn to page three, under the finding section, those six points are our findings based on our review. Now I'll just kind of go through them kind of quickly. The first one, the need for a variance is due to the required twenty five yard setback not being met by the proposed lot spoil. Second, the granting of the requested variance, we feel would provide the applicant with substantial justice by easing the redevelopment of an abandoned parcel by limiting the size of the commercial developments. Surrounding parcels would receive substantial justice by increasing the potential retail traffic through the area and elimination of a nearby blighted source. So we're, we're thinking that with increased activity in the area, that's going to help the businesses that are surrounding, not hurt them. Three, the granting of a variance would likely not cause any detriment to the surrounding community, rather would improve the existing site as it's currently abandoned right now. Number four, the applicant's hardship is not self-created. The applicant did not construct a building without proper guidance from the city and then say, what? I can't do this. This building has been there a long time. It was created for a different, a different purpose, and the developer is actually coming up with a creative reuse for the property, in our view. The redeveloped parcels would likely provide point five, an increase in retail traffic. I already mentioned that, but they could also cause, be a detriment by putting additional stress on the shared access easement connected to West Michigan Avenue. Again, that's kind of where we're, we're, you know, recommending that easement, an easement agreement take place for the shared access. And then finally, six, failure, failure to grant the variance to the parcel would continue to limit development options for the abandoned property. And we don't necessarily want to do that if we have someone with an idea that makes sense. So our recommendation for you all to consider is that the, the variance passes all the criteria that we just mentioned in the six findings. And we are recommending that you consider granting and allowing the variance to develop two separate parcels that will have no side yard setback and an additional parcel which would meet the required setbacks.
Thank you. So I think obviously we'll likely have questions, but as far as the audience, they should be directed to. Are you answering questions then on behalf of the applicant or?
Nope, I could answer questions about the zoning ordinance and, you know, things of that nature. The applicant would answer questions about development, specific things.
Hey, good evening. I'm Richard Lindsay. I'm here on behalf of BR Great Northern Malls. We had submitted an application, a letter and support back in September, September fifth, twenty twenty four. Not much, I think, is attached to your, in your packet, and not much has really changed except for the TSC has opened. And I said it would be opening, and so it is open. It's nice to have that being used again and get a wide variety of goods, jobs, all the good things that having that space open instead of being empty brings to the community. I have my client, Al Leiberman, is joining us by Zoom. Look around, I'm not sure how exactly he would join, but if you have any questions, I can answer them or he can answer them. But I think you've, you've covered everything very succinctly and basically the same thing that I would make the presentation about. So I'm glad to answer any questions. This is one of the favorite things on what's happening in Marshall. I say, what's going in this space? Well, he generates a hundred comments. So, you know, those, we're hoping we've got the TSC, obviously the Dollar Trade is being completed and then, you know, be able to sell the separate piece and then develop that with a separate owner. And then you can see from the drawing, there's basically an allot that sits to the west of Taco Bell. And that is another, you know, would be a free standing, freestanding commercial space. Big covers, think, you know, that, that kind of, that kind of a development in that area. So I'm glad to answer questions and I think Mr. Leiberman's glad to answer questions as well.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I'll start. So in looking at the, the specific factor that talks of whether denying it will be more than a mere inconvenience, I heard reference that there was an alternative to pursue a, a site condo. I'm curious what the rationale was for not wishing to pursue that.
A site condo requires quite a bit more in regard to deed and other paperwork that's required. And so this is a much simpler way to do it, cleaner way to do it. And through the reciprocal easements, you basically end up with this in the same position. So there will be a reciprocal easement agreement that will have a set of conditions. So, you know, whoever moves into that third spot, I guess, the second and third spots will still be subject to, you can't do certain things there, you know, have to be a commercial space. So as the owners of the retaining, what my client's going to retain, they'll still have those things in place. But it was really the choice of what was less expensive, what was easier to do. You end up in basically the same place, I would say, with, through this process.
And are those the reciprocal easements? I guess, what's the status of that? I, I'm thinking order of operations. Is this the first box that will be checked or are those already?
So the surveys have been done, descriptions have been developed and drafts have been prepared and I'm, I'm guessing Mr. Leiberman will want to know about eight thirty tomorrow morning what the status is. So we'll have that done pretty quickly, but we're waiting to do to see what the result is tonight before we do that.
Thank you.
I'm wondering, obviously parcel one is, is addressed, parcel two, parcel three. PBA is what exactly?
You know, I'm not sure what PBA stands for. It's I can't read what's on the right hand for a key. And so it's, it's all that's included within that blue area. And my guess is this was a drawing that we started out working on for the condo part of it. And then we overlaid these drawings over top of it. So I'm thinking it was related to the condo part of it. I think I would say disregard that. Unless somebody can read anything in the, the fine print on the side that identifies what it is.
It says permissible building area, but it's not being partial? Or is that part of parcel three? I mean, it's similar in color.
It, it would be the area where you could build and then have that part to the west as parking area. Am I stating that correctly? Okay.
Gotcha. Okay, I did have questions also about the, I was, I was actually hoping there'd be some comment here from the fire chief. Has, has the, has Marshall Fire Department looked at this and addressed any concerns with the attached spaces?
I'm going to say yes. Are you aware? I know there's been discussion about what types of walls need to this, to divide where there's separate ownership. And so I know I've seen emails back and forth with the fire chief about that. But I, I really can't comment other than obviously it'll be built to code. So.
I believe so. We can double check.
Yeah, I, I just, I know in, in, in some larger shared spaces, I, I worked in a mall when I was younger. And there were actually like, you know, hallways between that not only accommodated deliveries, but also accommodated firefighters. So I didn't know if anything of that nature would be desirable, you know, to, in case, you know, the fire was involved more than one unit kind of thing. So I would like to, whatever, whatever we do tonight, I would like it to be pending approval of at least the preliminary designs by chief.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that went sort of my question on the easement as well. When I first read through even some of the McKenna documentation, my take was there are other almost requirements that will need to be met and whether those have already been met or if we're first up. So, yeah, I think whatever we do should be contingent on those other elements being satisfied.
Yeah, and I, and I would expect that as well. We continue to add the other things in the letter.
Yes, and I believe there was something in here. I'm scrolling, trying to find it to your comment on the public safety element.
Excuse me, if I could just make one quick comment to Sal Leiberman. We have submitted plans to the city based upon their recommendation for fire, talking to the fire department code and everything. So they gave us exactly what they're going to require and we submitted a plan to them for their approval.
Thank you.
Kind of be contingent on the three things that are listed in the McKenna letter, the initial McKenna letter, and then you know, as being in compliance with the plans as approved by the fire chief and the building department.
I can say that I know that him was out there Monday or Tuesday and voiced what he found on that wall that's going to be the wall created. And he spoke with the people on site about the concerns that he saw and what would need to be changed to have it there. So I know he was out there just this week discussing it. So I know it's under that. So just for everybody else, I know that that was done.
Yeah, I guess ultimately you grant the variance, it doesn't extinguish the fact that those other elements still need to be met. It just gives, it's the preliminary threshold requirement. So, okay. Other questions from council?
I, I think what the chair is saying is, and this would be my proposal, is that your motion would be that the variance is granted contingent upon doing A, B, and C. And so it ties them together and we can't go just with the variance, right? We've got to have the variance, those three things, and we've got to have the building plans approved.
I don't know how bright a question this is, but I'm going to ask it anyway. On the parcels, how are those areas designated? I mean, are the actual monuments that go into the ground or is it just a GPS or?
They'll be surveyed and eventually, I mean, it will have to be done to satisfy, you know, title requirements. I don't know right offhand about the monuments and how it's set. I mean, it'll, it'll be surveyed and there'll be an ultimate survey to be able to sell it. So it'll be, you know, officially done. Which is also will be part of the application to split with, with the city. That will have to be part of that when that's submitted.
Any other questions before we turn to deliberation? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'll leave the mic on just so our Zoom audience can hear. So I know in past meetings, we've recited each of these verbatim. I don't think that's necessary here. I think McKenna gave us a summary quite well. So I think what we do instead is if any member has feelings on any of the factors cited or disagrees with the recommendation from McKenna, we voice those and deliberate on that. If that sounds good, so.
I guess I'll just voice, I'm, I don't have any opposition to this with the, with the contingencies. You know, obviously, I've, I've heard, you know, different conversations regarding this property over the last few years since Kmart closed. It, it seemed like it was, you know, too small for a lot of things and too big for others. And so I think, I think this seems like a good solution to make good use of that property in relatively, you know, obviously it's already in use, but so we're, we're on a good start.
Yeah, I, I think where I currently sit is, it's certainly not going to cause harm, right? The benefits are, are clear. It's whether this is truly necessary or whether it's a nice to have economically, it's kind of where my thinking lies. I think the benefits are, are clear and I don't see any adverse impact, of course, to adjacent properties or neighbors or a public nuisance, et cetera. I think that's pretty clear.
I, I actually kind of thought McKenna spelled it up pretty well, kind of the need for the necessity based off the change in retail. I, I think they're correct that there is no use for the facility, the size it is. I just don't know. That the, the builder or the owner could have expected that to happen. And they're kind of stuck with something that needs to change.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you know, see people all the time talk about, you know, we need this store here, we need that store here. And, you know, usually it's some form of big box, something that doesn't come to a town of sixty, eight hundred people, you know, it's just so having a smaller footprint, just, yeah, I think I, I do think it meets the needs of the community. I've been on the ZBA for quite a few years. I know Russ has been on longer, but I don't recall ever coming across something similar to this either. I think it's a creative way of using the property and hopefully it'll encourage people to come in.
Okay, if there are no other comments, I think then what we first need to settle on is what exactly we're motioning up to approve. So on my notes that I've been taking here, I, I know we've referenced some contingencies, one of which is the reciprocal easement. I think I heard a reference to a safety plan, but I think we should iron out exactly what if we are voting in favor, what exactly we're conditioning that on. So we all agree that the reciprocal easement is safety plan the right term? I think I heard that said.
I, I was speaking specifically fires, fire safety, but I guess if other people feel there should be less specific than that.
Could we term it maybe a fire safety review? Or? Yeah, unless if anyone knows the more, I guess, the precise terminology we should be using for something like that. I'm fine using. I do. Think so. No.
Seems to me it would be just that the, the plans are, as approved are by the appropriate authorities and part of that review is going to be fire team, building officials, all, all that stuff. And so again, and to have, I mean, I think your, your concern is this shared wall right between two two separate owners, but not a shared wall. Both of them is going to have to meet the fire standards. And then, I mean, we understand that be the case.
I, I guess I'll is that out of scope for this board?
Anything, right, I mean, your, your department building, all those plans that submitted, they have to meet those state codes. So they'll do their proper reviews. What they really need is guidance on whether, how they're going to treat this building.
Right.
Treat it as one building. Zoning Board of Appeals can decide, oh, you can slice this up into three separate buildings and that'll drive which code they have to follow plans that are submitted, but they'll have to meet those approvals.
Correct. You, you guys, you guys are just deciding whether or not to allow the three parcels with two of them having zero setback. But any building, any construction, any development project is going to have to go through your building department and meet those approvals. Do they have sprinkler systems? Do they have, you know, the fire that will all have to happen before there's a certificate of occupancy? And then they can come in the building and start to use it. It is a little tricky as you guys are sort of building out, you know, you'll have right now, there's a tenant in there and then the rest of the building is empty. So, you know, while that's building out, that may be I don't know, a minor concern for you guys. If somebody happens to break into the vacant part and start a fire, I don't know. But, but yeah, the, the building department, the fire department, they will be checking those things and then issue the certificate of occupancy and then the business will be able to be on site.
No, I, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. And so it would be similar to what they did with all the other businesses that occupy all the way down to through Family Fair when they originally built the places they had to, I'm sure, go through that whole process for the dividing walls and, okay, like. Yeah, I guess it just, like you said, it occurred to me that I don't want to set a limiting factor on this that that can't be met within the realm of our jurisdiction.
Right. What I'm hearing is, and I don't think that's the intent, right? We, we can't decide that building codes don't apply, right? Or a certificate of occupancy, change the requirements for that. I think more so what we're, or at least I'm trying to talk to is these are granted in perpetuity, right? Not just for this proposed use. So once we approve this variance, it will apply regardless of whether they're able to realize their proposed use. And so is there any concern that we attach? We approve this, this proposed plan doesn't work, but now what is the potential harm in that this variance now exists? And a potential future use could cause detriment. Again, we're in hypothetical land, but that's, that's more so what I'm speaking to versus making sure they check all the other boxes they're required to by the city, or by the, the city. So.
I don't know that I think access is a big deal. So you talk about the access easement is important to have. But the one I'd be compared, concerned about is to shared maintenance agreement. I just know that some of the things downtown have, have not gone smoothly when two parties can afford their share, but a third can't.
Yeah, let me just address it real quickly. So maybe give you the whole shopping center, the ours, and then the one that's owned by a different group is currently under an REA anyway. So it's all shared anyways, the parking lot and everything. So it shouldn't be a big deal to do it between the two or three tenants that we have there because it's, you're under an REA already. So you're just doing an REA effectively under an REA.
Thank you. But those would be the two conditions that I think that we'd want to approve based off of access and maintenance.
So on that point, then, I'm rereading the the letter to the ZBA from McKenna. And so in here it states, the applicant will be required to ensure that the parcels will all have the appropriate road access through a reciprocal access agreement between all parcels involved. So if I'm interpreting that correctly, that is not, it's not necessary that we necessarily condition it on that, then that's something that they'll be required to do regardless.
It would come from this board though, yeah. You guys, you guys would make the requirement.
Okay. In that case, then I think I'm comfortable with that scope of condition. Any other comments? Okay, I think then what we're looking for is a motion to approve the application conditioned on the appropriate. Well, we'll just use the verbiage from kind of the applicant, be required to ensure that all the parcels will have appropriate road access through a reciprocal access easement. will have appropriate road access through a reciprocal access easement, uh, between all parcels involved. And maintenance. Okay. Yeah. Where are you pulling that verbiage? Okay, let me find that page. Thank you. Do you want to motion that up? I think so, yeah.
Right. So I motion that we approve the variant. Contingent upon the applicant creates a notarized written easement agreement recorded by the Calhoun County Notaries Office regarding the access of all parking spaces and submit a copy to the City of Marshall. And also contingent that the applicant creates a notarized written shared lot maintenance agreement recorded by the Calhoun County Notaries Office and submit a copy to the City of Marshall.
Second.
Right. Vote.
Member Burns. Member Hill.
Yes.
Member Fisher Short.
Yes.
Member Karns.
Yes.
Alternate Whirlsburger.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Agenda, uh, those in attendance and participating for that matter are welcome to leave. Uh, or you are welcome to stay. All right. Next, public comment on non-agenda items. Yeah. Uh, no public. All right. Board reports. Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I want to thank you. I think this is going to be a fantastic project going forward. And, uh, I just haven't been to a public meeting in so long that I didn't have public comment. I had to say something. So still thank you guys.
You and me both. And no on board report. Okay. In that case, this meeting is adjourned.
Tap it on Facebook like last week.
Like that came downstairs about five o'clock, finishing up work and sat down. Pam's like, you're going to go take a shower? I'm like, for what?